All right, five o'clock. Call the meeting to order.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, with that, I'll make a motion to approve the November 12 regular meeting minutes.
A second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I'll follow that up with a motion.
Oh, hold on one second. I forgot to acknowledge, we have one board member on Zoom. Just for clarification, Neil, is there anybody else in the room with you?
Oh.
And you are unable to attend in person this evening?
I'm out of state.
Thank you, sir. All right, back to minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the November 12 non-public meeting minutes.
A second? Got it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, some announcements. I have a long list of meetings here. The Select Board will meet on the following dates: Monday, December 2 for a budget work session beginning at 1:00 p.m. Monday, December 9 for a budget work session beginning at 3:30 p.m. Monday, December 9 for the regular meeting at 5:00 p.m. Monday, December 16 for a budget work session at 1:00 p.m. Monday, December 23 for a regular meeting at 5:00 p.m. Monday, January 13 for the budget finalization beginning at 1:30 p.m. Monday, January 13 for the regular meeting beginning at 5:00 p.m. Monday, January 27 for the regular meeting at 5:00 p.m. And then also during that regular meeting, we'll have the first budget hearing at 5:15. And then Thursday, February 6, the second budget hearing at 5:15. Any citizens wishing to be listed on the Select Board's agenda should contact Town Hall the Thursday before by noon before the scheduled meeting. All meetings are held upstairs in Town Hall and on Zoom. The Zoom information can be found on the town's website at plymouthnh.gov. So let's get started with the Town Manager's report.
Thank you. Town Clerk's update: The Town Clerk's Office reports on activity and transactions for the months of July, August, and September 2024. Amy and Melinda successfully ran a primary and general election. Thank you to the election volunteers for their hard work to make the event a success. The office was very busy with the following: motor vehicle registrations processed and the amount of 1,881 transactions, which is 101 more than last year, the previous year. Vital records coming in at 2:30 and 14 dogs registered. As always, if you have any questions or concerns, please reach out to Amy and Melinda and let them know, 536-1732. The 2024 tax rate, the town portion of the tax rate, had a decrease of 16 cents per $1,000 of valuation. This is the third year in a row that we've been able to accomplish a decrease in the town portion of the tax rate. The tax rate letter was issued on Thursday, November 14. Below is a comparison chart from '23 to '24 showing the decreases and increases that are associated with the total tax rate. Fund balance: The town implemented a fund balance policy in August of 2023. The fund balance of the town beginning 2024 were the fund balance of $331,000. The actual year ended audited fund balance at the end of 2024 is now $1,849,526 and will be available for future tax rates and in the event of any emergencies. This amount is an increase over the prior year's balance of $1,518,526 and is equivalent to 7.92% of the overall recommended fund balance as recommended by the New Hampshire Department of Revenue. The range that is targeted by New Hampshire Department of Revenue is between 5% and 17% of our tax efforts, to include not only the town, but the schools, state education, and Grafton County taxes. The '25-'26 budget, the Budget Committee, Town Manager, and Finance Director met with the department heads starting on November 7 to review budgets and CIP requests. The process finished on November 14. The Budget Committee will make their recommendation to the Select Board. The Select Board will stop meeting with department heads on December 2, 9, and 16. The Capital Improvement Committee met on Wednesday, November 20 to review the CIP requests for '25-'26. The Select Board will finalize their budget on January 13, 2025. And as Zach just mentioned, excuse me, the first public hearing on the budget will occur on January 27, 2025 at 5:15 at Town Hall. Our goal is to continue budgeting conservatively for '25-'26. Economic development: I've had the opportunity to speak with both Neil Cannon, Finance Development Consultant, who will attend the January 27-25 Select Board meeting, and Stuart Arnett from Arnett Development Group will attend the January 13-25 Select Board meeting to discuss the scope of what the town of Plymouth is looking for. Solar Array update: New Hampshire Electric Co-op will install the meter on November 26 so we can get AC power to the system. After the meter is installed, the programming of the inverters, which is 26 of them, will take place. The hope of the installers, taking the Thanksgiving holiday into consideration, is that the system could be up and running as early as Friday, December 6. Union contract negotiations: We continue to work through union negotiation meetings with the Police Department Union and the Plymouth Professional Firefighters, reviewing the union proposals and counters offers as presented. Happy to report that we have finalized the Plymouth Professional Firefighters Union Contract as of two weeks ago. I met with Jess DeTeil on Monday, November 18 for our monthly meeting. I've worked with Plymouth State University. We will again have downtown free holiday parking. And Plymouth State University's lot 210 and 211, lower lots adjacent to the Silver Center, will be available for free downtown holiday parking from December 11 through December 31. We'll put a notice on the website as well as in the newsletter, and that has been communicated to Explore Plymouth. Two other notes real quick is that we still do have two full-time openings, one at the recycling center, as well as a part-time position at the recycling center and a full-time police officer. The Christmas Parade is Saturday, December 7, 5:00 p.m. on the Main Street. And Main Street shopping the evening of December 12, so the free holiday parking works very nicely with that date. And that concludes my report.
In terms of the staffing at the recycling center, I assume we're going to continue to have the recycling area closed until we're staffed? Or is that day-by-day? Like, what's going on?
Well, I met with Jim last Friday, and we've come up with a solution which was implemented over the weekend, which he has blue bins in front of the glass and the metals. In those blue bins, people will have to separate their plastics and separate their metals, but nothing will be closed. And once those bins are filled, they will move those with a stethes here, dump them, and bring them back out. So we will accept plastics and metals continuously without shutting that down again.
Oh, that's great. Good.
Has it affected hours open or anything?
What's that?
Has it affected hours?
It has not. It has not.
This wasn't a question other than just, I wanted to highlight again to folks who are watching on the tax rate. Scott said the town portion has in fact reduced again this time. So it's down 16 cents for the town on your tax bill. The increase that you're seeing is coming from local education and state education. We talked a lot about the schedule for our meetings. The school is also in their budget session meetings. So if you're concerned about your tax rate, we're doing a pretty good job here at town. We have three years in a row reducing it. This year's budget's looking pretty good as well. But if you're concerned about your tax rate, attend those school budget meetings and get your input there. Because that's where the impact's coming from. Any other questions or comments for Scott?
Thank you.
All right. We have, we have some PSU students tonight? All right, so Nick Mueller, William Matthews, Taylor Lines, and Kayden Mattson. Do you want to... Scott, do you want to introduce them, or do you want them to just jump in here?
Sure. I'll just do a brief introduction. It's that part of Plymouth State University's programming and classes is tackling the wicked problem. I've met with two groups with regards to different problems that they're tackling. But with regards to this group, they wanted to come and talk to the board about tackling the wicked problem. And one of theirs is dealing with trails and signage and things of that nature. So without further ado, I'll let you take it over.
My name is Nick. So we are freshmen, and we were assigned a project that would impact and kind of enlighten the community on biodiversity loss and the problems around that. So we came to the idea of making information boards that were open to what you guys think would be good information to put on there. But we were thinking just information on local plants, animals, and just kind of shedding light to people on the subject of biodiversity loss, I guess. So, yeah. So yeah, we came to the idea of renewing information boards and adding new boards. And so, and then for the audience, we were thinking like adults. So we were thinking Fox Pond. And we figure adults are going to be watching their kids, so they're going to have time on their hands. And if they see a board to go read, they could potentially read it. And then, to get kids involved and kind of inform them and kind of catch their eye, we were thinking shaping the boards as animals, so like a frog-shaped board or something along those lines. And also including like fun facts and pictures that would catch the eye of the kids. So that's what we were thinking for like an audience. And, yeah. And so... So we met with Amy Velamanga. And she kind of gave us some ideas, told us websites that are good to kind of get the information from. So iNaturalist was one she gave us. And it's kind of just a website that you can search an area and it'll bring up a ton of information on species and plants in that area. So we were thinking that's where we'd get the majority of our information to put on the boards. And New Hampshire Fish and Game is another one. And yeah, New Hampshire Fish Finder, I guess, so.
All right. Hi, I'm Taylor. Our PSU group members could not make it today. But basically, we mainly focused on... Basically, we mainly focused on Fox Pond Park because we believe that it's kind of like the boards are a little rundown. They're like, some of them don't even have any information on it. It's just blank boards. We believe that we could do some right by it, by getting some information out, especially involving biodiversity, like in our class. We want people to know about the invasives in the area, more about the animals. And like Nick said, we want to get the kids involved because mainly they're our target audience because they're always there. The park's like being used quite a bit, so we want to get them involved in the environment. We were also considering a QR code, like putting on the boards, so we can get the kids to like play little games there. Like, oh, how many pine cones can you find at the park? Like, just ways to get them involved, get them interested with it. So we're, so basically, we're also looking to you guys for like what information you would also want us to put out there. We're also talking to Park and Rec about some information they would want on there. That's why we're here, to get your approval, get some insight from you guys. And our material that we want to use for these boards is basically like discarded wood. We're going to be going to this lumber mill in a few days, once we get your guys' approval, to get some reusable wood. We're trying to be very like eco-friendly in terms of this. So basically, we're also trying to promote like recycling there, so we're hoping to get recycling bins as well. So do you guys have any questions for us at all?
Have you reached out to the Conservation Committee?
Sorry.
The Conservation Committee?
Uh, no.
I think that may seem appropriate.
Given the goals and what you're trying to do, biodiversity and what have you, they would certainly be interested in.
Okay.
Maybe hook up with Ted to participate in that.
Who's the chair?
The chair is Melissa and Joan.
Joan Charlie. Yeah. I think another reach out would be to Lisa Ash, the Recreation Director. Lisa Ash. Reason being, it might be a really good program to offer through the Recreation Department to bring awareness to the children, if that's truly your target. As well as Robert Cormier, our POCS supervisor. He maintains the boards in Fox Park that you're talking about. So I think gathering some thoughts with him as well with regards to what those boards could look like.
Yes.
You know, you talked about forming them in the shape of animals and having posters and that format. I think, you know, between the Conservation Committee, POCS Department, the Recreation Department would be a good start in having a conversation to move the project along.
Robert?
Cormier.
Cormier?
C-O-R-M-I-E-R. And Lisa Ash.
Lisa Ash. Okay, awesome.
They're always looking for new types of programs to implement, and that might be a great half-hour, 45-minute program that the two of you could even go talk to children about.
Yes.
Awesome.
Nick, I can email, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I can email you contacts for those individuals if that will help you.
That'd be awesome.
Yes, that would be great. Thank you.
I have your email address. Right? That's okay.
Just any thought on funding? Not quite sure.
So we were thinking getting the wood kind of just from excess wood, you know, like a lumberyard kind of came to mind. And funding, other than that, like other than the structure of the board, I don't think there's much funding needed. So yeah, that's kind of what we were thinking in terms of that. And then whether to make it like withstand the cold and rain and stuff, we were thinking of laminating, right?
Yes, like Plexiglas to keep it long-lasting.
So I guess that would...
But basically, we're getting a lot of the support from PSU. So we're not, like, it's not really like a money trouble problem. We're getting a lot of support from our teachers, people like involved in that area as well, so.
And if there's anything you guys would want on the boards, like if thoughts have come to mind and it's just something you guys haven't gotten to or whatever, we would be more than happy to cater to what you guys want on there, you know? So, yeah.
I'm assuming Robert might have something in his budget to add to that.
Okay, cool.
And I think he has a lot of wood that's there from other projects that were used in the past that might be available for something like that as well. But having a conversation with him, I think, would be very beneficial.
Sweet.
So you're going to beat the snow putting these up, or?
What is it?
We're really trying to.
When do these go up?
We're not sure yet. We're...
We were mainly looking for like approval, like some assistance with the boards, but we're, yeah, we're basically like really trying to progress with this like quick, quick.
So next week. All right.
Yeah. Sweet.
So Ann, you'll follow up and give them contact information, Ted's contact information as well?
Frank Miller has a question.
Oh, Frank?
Yeah, Frank, please.
As part of my research on economic development, one of them is the agricultural industry. And I have an office over Chase Street. I have a whole display on biodiversity as far as an industry and a lot of research material. And I think it might be helpful if you come up and take a look at it because there are great business potentials for the young kids getting involved in biodiversity and agricultural elements. So I offer that to you.
Appreciate it.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Frank.
Awesome.
And that's Frank Miller, and like you said, his office is above Chase Street, right downtown.
He can commonly be found in Chase Street.
Yeah, that's right.
This is true. Saw him there today. Anything else we can help you with?
No.
I think that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming in.
Appreciate it.
Have a good Thanksgiving break.
Yeah, you too.
Sorry.
Is John okay?
Zach, Tom Newcomb's on his way, so if we could jump over to the Town of Plymouth chain of command with NHMA, if that's okay?
Yep, let's do that. Yeah, absolutely.
So what this is, is attached to your document, you'll see a letter that Bill Bolton sent when he was Chair to NHMA talking about who and who cannot speak to NHMA. And when Bill sent this back in March of 2020, it removed all restrictions and allows town employees, department heads, to speak with NHMA in regards to relative issues as long as the town is being notified when an individual speaks to them. I don't see a need to change this, but we do need to update it based on the request from NHMA back on November 13.
Do we often have employees contact?
We can restrict it to department heads.
No, I'm just curious.
I mean, I don't know of any employees that have reached out to NHMA in my conversation with Margaret Burns, but...
If I recall, I believe this was put in place to address some concerns where some, specifically boards, I think more than employees, were having some concern and restriction placed around who they could contact and what questions they could ask. And this was a way to kind of open that up and not have that gatekeep kept quite as much.
Yeah. But if, this hasn't been a problem since then.
No.
I would think...
Well, not since I, not my tenure.
Yeah.
So I don't see a need to change it and just reiterate what we're currently doing back to NHMA for that purpose.
You need a motion? No? Okay.
Thank you.
So we don't need a motion? Is that what you indicated?
She indicated.
No.
All right, perfect. We have consensus. Good enough.
And Tom Newcomb has arrived.
Hey, Tom.
You don't look like Tom.
I am not Tom. So I just want to take a quick sec. As you know, Tom works for me at the fire department, or he's been assigned to our office. Him and I work very closely. And we're pretty fortunate because Tom's isolated some stuff that needs to be addressed. And this has been a diligent project that him and I have been working on for the last three, four months at least. So I'll leave it to Tom and run with it.
Good evening. Sorry if I run a little late, doing the shuffle between drop-off and pick-up with my daughter, so.
No worries. You were right on time. It was perfect.
So you want to start with the fees?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I'm here tonight to talk about the triannual review of building permit fees. And we've had a few issues that have come up in the past year that have caused me to make some recommendations for a little bit of a change in the way we do things. From a residential standpoint, I think that I'd like the system that we have now, which the system we have now is a base fee of $35 plus a square footage fee, depending upon whether or not it's remodeling or new construction. So for the residential, I'd like to stay with that system, but have some modest increases in the fees just to reflect inflation and the cost of what it takes to manage the permits and do the inspections. So for the residential side, I'm not looking to do much. Looking to make some changes on the commercial side. But also I want to bring us more in line with what other communities are doing in terms of the commercial. And also, right now, we have, let's say for example, somebody's doing a project on their home, and they get one permit that encompasses the building permit, plumbing and electrical and mechanical such as heating. What most communities do is they require additional permitting for plumbing and electrical and mechanical, which serves two purposes. One is because that additional work also requires additional inspections, then we're now covering the cost of those inspections. The other thing is it allows us to have an application for a permit that comes in. We're able to ensure that that person is duly licensed to be in their trade. And I've been involved in a couple cases lately of permits in town where we've had issues with unlicensed people. And recently was called to testify in a court case regarding it. So, and then from the commercial standpoint, right now, we have a fee structure that again is based upon square footage. The problem with that is we've had some substantial projects in town for commercial projects that were not tied into square footage, that were improvements to the building in general and not based on square footage renovations. And therefore, they were only charged the minimum fee. So I'm proposing that for the commercial side, we have a basic starter fee for the permit, but then it's based on the cost of the job of $10 per thousand. So, and I think that will create some more equality based upon some of the projects that we're seeing. And then lastly, there are a lot of things that aren't really delineated in the fee structure. Things such as solar panels, demolition, they're just kind of put into a miscellaneous. So I'm proposing that we actually assign a fee to them. Swimming pools. We have no set fee for swimming pools. It's just considered miscellaneous. So that in a nutshell is what I'm proposing. We're going to want to have a discussion about it tonight to get your input on it. And then we have a public hearing scheduled coming up in a couple weeks. So I'd like to keep my comments short and open it up for questions and comments from your end.
Zach, if I may?
Yeah, please.
So three years ago, we updated the fees when I was the building inspector and doing the code enforcement. And part of that discussion we had three years ago is we would be moving more in this direction to come in line with our abutting towns and those towns that abut them, plus some larger communities that Tom has researched and looked at. So this was really the next step, was when we updated these three years ago. And then we would look again in three years to move even further with updating our fee schedule to make sure that we are covering all the costs and making sure that the permits are more articulated for each phase of the building project. So this is where we were moving three years ago, and Tom spent a lot of time doing some research and putting this fee schedule together. And we do have a public hearing scheduled on December 13. And we do have a public hearing scheduled on December 9th.
Yes.
Well, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So regarding the scope of the permitting, I mean, it's, it's getting larger. I mean, you're doing like pools, solar arrays?
Yes. Solar arrays, we're doing roughly one a month.
Oh yeah?
But in terms of permitting in general, we did 125 permits last year for the year. I had estimated that we would do 150 permits this year. As of today, we're at 152. About 30% over last year. We had, for the first six months of the year, we were at 50% over last year.
So how do you base all your expertise on for like solar array?
I ask a lot of questions. No, but it, it really, in some of these things, I have to rely upon the, the contractor.
Yeah, okay.
And say, tell me what I'm looking at. But also, I have learned to rely upon state inspectors. For example, Ken Valerie, who's the state electrical inspector, has accompanied me to a lot of large inspections. For example, the Quincy Road solar array, which went live, the mid-state health, they have about 600 amps coming into that building to serve the MRI and the CAT scan. So when I start looking at systems like that, I know I need to bring in help. But also, the, I take a fair amount of, of training courses. This past week, I had two different training courses. One of them from Spear Hospital for first responders on dealing with hoarders. Another one on code enforcement, specifically the specific legal steps to go through in terms of documenting and notification so that we can then deal with things like junkyards. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
I'll, I have a question too. Under the commercial, I noticed that you're going from something that's based on square feet to something that's based on a dollars per thousand?
Yes.
How, how would you know in advance what the dollars per thousand would be on a proposed new project?
Well, generally with the commercial projects, before I even see it, they have drawn up plans, they've put it out for, for bid, so that they have those numbers ahead of time.
So if it was, if it went over that price, it would, you wouldn't care?
Yeah, to a certain degree, it's a little bit of an, of an honor system, but even from a contractor standpoint, you know, I've seen situations where you, you get people to try and come in with a low number to cut down the fee. And there are sources that you can go to where you can, with a particular scope of a project, you can go online and, and you can get an idea as to what it should cost. But I, we're not in the business of nickel and diming people and if they give us a, a project cost of, you know, $100,000 for example, and I'm not going to be looking to see that it comes in at that and not 120,000.
So why the change?
Well, I think the, to, mainly because we've had some large-scale projects that have not been tied to square footage. Good example is we had a, a commercial project, they, their application said that it was a $260,000 facelift on a building. It's not tied to square footage. So we've got a $250,000 facelift of a building that involves multiple inspections and they're paying less than you would pay to put a shed in your backyard.
How does that, effectively that ends up being about a 1% fee?
Exactly.
How does that compare to surrounding communities?
It's mid-range. Generally, I'm seeing between $8 and $12 per square foot.
Are surrounding communities doing this model of, of commercial fees based on a percentage of the project versus square footage? Is anybody doing that or is this kind of a new idea?
It's not, it's not a new idea at all. It's just, it is, it is not something you see in this area that much because there is not a lot of commercial development. But when you get into the larger communities that have a lot of commercial development, this is the scale that, that they use. And also, as you get into some of the larger cities, you see that on residential projects, they will also base it on the cost per thousand rather than square footage. But I just find that can be difficult. If you've got a homeowner that's doing a project on his own, it can be difficult to try and really tie that into the, to the cost. And I, I, that's going to add another burden on to the residents, trying to avoid that.
From a commercial perspective, and I'll take two that happened when I was building inspector, is Dunkin' Donuts. They do a full facelift. But that full facelift includes mechanical, electrical and plumbing. So we're really not capturing what we should be capturing based on just doing a facelift. And another one was McDonald's when they did the full facelift out there. So I think, in my eyes, this process is much more, it creates more, much more of a balance for what we do in a residential perspective as what we're doing in a commercial perspective for the inspections that have to take place.
Do we anticipate any pushback from commercial developers around this fee structure? I'm, I'm just thinking in terms of economic development, offsetting tax base, that's a priority for us. I, I would hate to put new fees in place and then have people say, well, I'm going to build this in surrounding community.
And that's, and that's a great question and that is something that I considered. And I, you, I don't see that being an issue because I think that businesses are going to come to Plymouth because they want to be in Plymouth. And they're not necessarily going to look at a 1% charge, 1% add-on as pushing them away. So, but it is something, as I say, it is somewhat unique to this area, but if you look at communities our size, that's how it's done. And, and it's, so it's basically, it's, it's what's expected from most businesses. You get, say like a Burger King, a Walmart, that, that's the fee structure that they're running into in their other markets.
Okay. In terms of the distinction between residential and commercial, is a landlord who owns a student housing building, do they fall into the commercial side of this?
No, that is residential.
That's still residential even though it, so it's commercial building, it's not commercial ownership?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Have you modeled any of this out to, you know, show an example project under both scenarios to see what that would show as far as what the commercial entity would be paying now versus what they used to pay?
I've actually gone through a significant number of permits issued this year and I've gone back, both residential and commercial. Haven't done it on all of them, but probably done it on about 30 where I've gone through and I've said, okay, let's calculate what the fee would be under this new structure versus the old. And there's actually, there's instances where it's very similar. For example, a business recently put in a 30 by 50 outdoor pavilion. So that permit fee was a little over $400, would be about $600 under this scenario. You know, the, the, we get a commercial build out of some space that was unfinished because it was unrented, that went up from about 300 to 400. But then you get outliers like a $250,000 remodel of, facelift of a building, they paid $50, whereas now they'll pay, you know, they would pay, you know, a little over 2,000 because it would be 1%. So, and then in the residential side, in most instances, there'd be slight increases. In preparation for this today, I looked at some of them. New construction of a, a 3,500 square foot house went from about 780 to 890. So still seeing some modest increases in the residential. But the commercial, you're seeing some that are seeing modest changes, but then the outliers that were down very low are, are paying a reasonable share. And if you'd like for the public hearing, I can, or before then, I can actually give you specific actual numbers, if you'd like to see that.
I think for the public hearing, it would be really nice to have a few examples like that of, here's a project, under the old fee structure, it would have been this, under the new fee structure, it's this.
Yeah.
I think that would help to cement it.
Yeah, so I have the information on that, I've just been trying to not name specific projects, but if you'd like, I can.
You could, you could make up a fake project.
Okay.
Yeah.
You have enough aggregate.
I won't identify it.
Yeah, you have enough aggregate information to say, this is what this example project would cause under this scenario and then the other.
I suspect that's all public information technically anyway, but...
It is.
But I agree, you could semi-anonymize it.
Yeah. A couple of other things just to point out that I'm putting on here that we've not had in the past. Reinspection fees. If, that, if I have to go out multiple times, which I often do, then because they're not ready, because they fail. So we do not currently have a reinspection fee, pay for the time for going back out there. Also, a fee for unpermitted work. And that, you know, in the, in the past month, I've been chasing down four projects. One of them was a residential project that I was able to sign off on today, but I had to send him two letters to get him to pull a permit. Also involved in a commercial project where I wound up bringing in the state electrical inspector and they're having, holding hearings on that electrical contractor. It's a very large electrical contractor that is now facing some consequences due to doing unpermitted work in town. But we don't have any teeth to go after people and, and say that, you know, okay, you didn't pull a permit, you know, there should be some consequences. So, and then one last thing that I've added, or that I would like to see, is for accessory dwelling units. Accessory dwelling units is basically if you want to have a separate living unit either in your house or on your property and that, so there's additional paperwork involved in that in order to see that it meets the requirements of our zoning and of the state law. And up until recently, it's been required to go through the planning board to get that screening process done. And now it is a matter of right in many of the districts in town. So now I have to do that screening. So proposing a few other additional things.
And Tom has been to the planning board on that and had a conversation with the planning board, I believe, two meetings ago?
Correct.
If I'm not correct, if I'm not mistaken. With regards to that, and I know they're talking about this while in the zoning regulations, but Tom has some suggestions, if the planning board chooses to move forward, that I think could mitigate a lot of the issues that we're seizing with regards to accessory dwelling units.
Yeah, in fact, actually Scott, the planning board, their response to my presentation about accessory dwelling units was that, that they felt that they were supportive of everything, but it was not their decision to make, that it was for this board to make.
Just looking through this, in the accessory dwelling units in particular, the last page of this is accessory dwelling unit recertification. So someone who has an accessory dwelling unit is going to have to get recertified annually?
Well, we're, the accessory dwelling is a different subject, which we can talk about if you have time this evening, but do you want to focus, we, do you want to stay on the fees for right now?
Yes, let's, let's wrap up the fees first and then let's jump into accessory dwelling units, if that's good with you.
Absolutely.
Are there any other questions about fees?
Just has the planning board looked at the new structure?
Of the fees?
Yes.
They have not, it's generally not in their purview.
Okay.
But I can run it by them before the planning, the public meeting, if you'd like. I'll have to check their schedule to see when their next meeting is and see if I can get on the agenda.
If, if you have to bring in, you know, state electricians who have a bit more experience, is that charged back as well, is that all part of?
No, there, no, there is no charge to the town for that.
Okay.
And it's, it's just, it's a guidance that they provide. So we do not pass anything on to the property owner since it's no fee to us.
So one of the questions I had about the fee, do we know roughly what we're bringing in for revenue from those fees?
That's what my question was going to be.
It is.
I'd say between 12 and 15,000 right now.
Okay. And that's, I was looking for that level of ballpark.
And that's about what my records show, because I keep a running tally on it from my end as well.
And does the majority of that come from residential or commercial? Is it really a mix?
It's mostly residential and as I mentioned in, in my memo, the, the vast majority of the fees are under $100. So to give the exact numbers here, I say in the first 10 months of the year, we issued 142 permits, 148 of them were residential. And that, two of them were town properties that were no fees, but of the 199 for which fees were assessed, there were 12 fees over $500, 29 between 500 and 100, and 98 under 100. And because most of those really fall under the, the, the base permit fee because they're smaller projects, looking at those, those, most of those 98 will still be under 100. So, so for the vast majority of the, the permits that we issue, they will see very minimal change. It's rarely the, the outliers, the large commercial projects, which when I first brought this up with Scott, the beginning of the year, we had two, we're now up to three. That, of, of six-figure commercial projects not tied to square footage that paid the minimum, $50. And I think that, that puts a, puts a burden on to the residents, on to the homeowners.
So when you throw in those large commercial projects, are we losing money as a town, given your time and?
Yes.
I would think so, yeah.
Yeah, but basically for...
You could, we have the budget right here.
Especially with the multi-visits that you have to make.
Right. Yeah, if you figure that, let's just say each visit takes an hour in, in planning, issuing the permit can take an hour to two in, in reviewing it. So the, on, you know, use the example of a facelift on a multinational chain building in town that probably took me six visits in different states. in town that probably took me six visits in different stages.
So to put that in perspective.
And that was a $50 fee.
If you look at what the total costs are, it's roughly $50 an hour with benefits and FICA and everything, for Tom to go out there and do that inspection, so they're paying for one inspection, he's doing six.
Yeah, and for reference, the land use enforcement budget area, 2024, 2025, 46,000 is, in round numbers, 46,000. So, you know, we bring in 12 to 15,000 dollars of fees to kind of offset some of that cost, but really, that's a, it's a cost, cost center.
Yeah.
To the taxpayer, yeah, exactly.
So I'm assuming all that information then is taken into account, setting the new fees and new structure?
Actually, I did not take the budget into account, because I really wanted to look at what, where the fees should be, and less looking at what it costs on our end. You know, we, we do look at things in terms of, okay, we need to have the department pay for itself, but also in the new budget, it's, it's looking at an expansion of my role and making it full-time. So this, so there, my understanding, you know, Kevin and I have been, been talking about expanding the role a little bit more to bring in some life safety inspections, because part of the reasoning for having me as part of the fire department is that now all inspectional services are under one house. So, you know, last year, the fees covered the, the department budget. This year, with some expansion of my hours, I, I think we'll probably be close, but next year, we're looking at actually expanding the, the role, my role as well. So that may not necessarily have a full impact in terms of the fees covering the budget. But, and when I looked at this, I wanted to flush it out, to see that we're having fees that cover where the costs are. For example, if there's an electrical inspection needed, then we have a fee for that. If there's a plumbing inspection needed, we have a fee for that. And that the commercial be more reflective of the time that's needed in it. I think that the, this will make some substantial increases in the income to fund the budget. I don't know if it'll quite cover the entire budget, because that budget is going to have some expanded activities as well.
So that's all included in the 25, 26 budget that you were given tonight? And there is another piece of that, that I don't want to talk about at this point on ways to offset that cost as well, that Kevin, Tom and I have met on, that I'll bring to your attention after these public hearings are taking place.
Yeah, it's budget season, so we're getting into all that stuff.
Any other questions?
Any other questions about fees, anything, Neil, we, we haven't called on you to?
The next planning board meeting is December 5th.
All right, I'll talk to Joseph about getting on their agenda.
He'll be back in tomorrow morning, Tom.
This is very thoughtful, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Any other information, other than I'll put together some more detailed comparison of the two, if you'd like?
For the public hearing.
For the public hearing, yeah.
Yes.
That sounds fantastic.
So, and I've also, just as an aside, you may or may not know, I also work part-time as the Ashland Building Inspector. And so I actually was issuing a, a permit last week in Ashland for a, it was a partial remodel of a, of a home in, in addition. And I looked at it as to under Ashland's fees, under our existing fees and under the proposed fees. And it's interesting, the Ashland fees, Ashland is working off the fees from 2019, and this, so I looked at what the fee was for that, and I looked at the fee under our proposed fees, and they were within $7. And that's a fee from another town from, what, five years ago, versus these are fees that's going to be in effect for the next three years. So there's a balance between having to, we want to have some increase, but we're also now, we're planning three years ahead. So we don't want to have a, a huge hit either. But also with the commercial being tied to the cost of the project, that when we meet again in three years, I don't plan on changing that, because it's, it's already tied into inflation.
Built into the construction costs, inflation.
Exactly.
Yep. All right, any other questions on fees?
George, good.
Good, Neil? All right, well, let's talk about accessory dwelling units.
Great. So, is everybody familiar with what accessory dwelling unit is? Basically, just for the public, an accessory dwelling unit is, let's say, there's a state law, an RSA that was enacted, that would allow people to be able to add a, another housing unit in their property, whether it be in their existing house. So for example, you want to put an apartment in your basement, or if you want to add on to your house, or if you want to do a standalone property, that you have the ability to do that, under certain restrictions. There are size restrictions, and in Plymouth, it can be no more than 1,000 square feet. The, it can have no more than two bedrooms, and it can house no more than two adults. But also, a important restriction, and this is both in our zoning and in the RSA, is that the owner of the property must have their primary residence in either the main home or the accessory dwelling unit. We can't specify which one they have to live in. The RSA says that they have to live in one, but it doesn't matter which. And I've had some issues in this past year with people not being aware of that requirement. And what brings it more to the forefront is that these are two situations that have gone through the vetting process of the planning board, where the planning board, on their application, the people have specifically said, yes, this will be my primary residence in one of the units. So in one case, property actually was a boarding house, which in talks with Joseph Perez, we feel shouldn't even qualify for being able to have an ADA, because it is not considered a single-family residence, and you, and it can only be a single-family residence. But furthermore, these people had no intention of living there. They're absentee owners, and it came to light because I got a complaint from, in a butter, about the construction that was going on, and, and then as I investigated, I, I see that they're not living there, and I talked, talked with the owners, and they have no plans for living there. Their plan was to rent it out. So I let them know, so that they could stop construction. They were building a detached structure. So like, they got it closed in, and they're going to figure out what they're going to do with the building now. But what's, I'm seeing, not just in Plymouth, but I'm seeing in other communities, through the New Hampshire Building Officials Association, they have a, a very active message board for discussions between different officials. I find it incredibly helpful. Just the other day, I posted on a question about a code, and I got two responses within minutes. So it's a, it's a great resource, and a very active discussion in it has been accessory dwelling units and what different communities are doing to ensure that the RSA is followed. And one reason also, from a town standpoint, why we want to be on top of this, is because effectively, this allows anybody in the town, in any zoning district, in any neighborhood, to add an apartment, what used to be called an in-law, but there's no restrictions. So it could be for caring for a family member, it could be because you want to rent it out, and you have the right to do that. But without enforcing the requirement that the, that the owner live on site, we're effectively opening up the door for the entire town to be two-family homes, that could be investment property. And we have enough issues with rental properties in town as it is, that are with absentee owners. And so we want to see that we're following the, the RSA and enforcing it as well. So what I am proposing for the accessory dwelling units, you see my narrative there, and I did go to the planning board with this. If you look at my forms, this is the accessory dwelling unit checklist. It is literally the same form that Joseph Perez and the planning board use when the planning board reviews an accessory dwelling application. But as I say, up until last March, when we had a zoning change, it used to be that anybody in town needed to go through the planning board in their vetting process prior to applying for a building permit. Now, in some of our zones, that requirement has been taken off the books, taken out of zoning, so now it is straight to me. So the accessory dwelling unit checklist is more of a, just an organizational thing from my standpoint, so that I can check the boxes. And again, this is the same, literally copied Joseph's form. So, so this is just to make sure that we check the boxes, that all of the requirements in our zoning and the RSA are met. So any questions on that? It's pretty straightforward.
So, an applicant would come into the planning board to get the approval for an ADU, and the planning board gives them the approval for the accessory dwelling unit. Then they would come and get the building permit application, fill that out. This check form would be part of the building permit application process?
Yes, but now with the new zoning, you, the, and accessory dwelling unit is a matter of right in some zoning districts. So there's no longer the requirement to go to the planning board. So if you're, I believe it's the single-family and multifamily districts, that there is no longer a requirement to go to the planning board. So before March, somebody would come in to me and say, I want to do an accessory dwelling unit, and I would send them to Joseph. They would do the application for a conditional use permit from the planning board. Conditional, the, the conditional use permit would be issued, and then I get a copy of it, and I can say, all right, now they've got planning board approval, now we can go forward. But that is not the case anymore, that the planning board has that review, they're going straight to me now.
So in the event that it is an acceptable use in a zoning district, this would be your form that you're using to assure compliance with the RSA on ADUs?
Yes, just as the planning board was doing as part of their review, basically just taking the same form and making it part of my review, since the cases where their review was not happening.
So you're allowed to have the review now, and they no longer are?
Well, it's made, it's, it's a matter of right. Under zoning, it's basically, there's permitted uses, there's prohibited uses, and then there's some uses that require either a special exception from the ZBA or a conditional use permit from the planning board. So this was, accessory dwelling units were in that middle area, where it was permitted with a review beforehand, but now in some zoning districts, you, they still need to go to the planning board, but in some zoning districts, you do not need to go to the planning board. So I am adding this form, and frankly, I don't think that I need this board's approval for it, but I just want to let you know of the process that I'm doing. This is my own internal checklist, to ensure that the property owners are making representations, that they're meeting those requirements, and that I'm reviewing those requirements and saying, yes, they meet, they meet them.
Just so you don't miss something.
Yes, but also I get representations from the property owner.
The owner that all of it's true.
Yes.
Yep.
So in your scenario, where you talked about the, it's truly a boarding house, with your checklist in your hands now, that won't happen again?
Well, yes and no, because the planning board uses the same form.
Right.
And, you know, if you look at the, one of these requirements is that, it's the second one down, that, that the, either the ADU or the principal dwelling unit should be the principal residence and legal domicile of the property owner. They checked off yes.
Right.
So they misrepresented themselves, and therefore, I told them that they are not going to be getting a certificate of occupancy for that unit. So, but it's a shame that it wasn't caught earlier in the process, but I'm glad they were able to catch it.
Right, but that could still.
Right, which brings me on to the next form, which is, just as in town, if somebody wants to, if somebody wants to build in Plymouth on a class 6 road, they first need to go to the planning board, and they, and then they make recommendations to this board for a waiver of municipal resources, that gets recorded at the registry of deeds to put future property owners on notice that, you know, that you're not going to get all the municipal services because you're on a class 6 road. So, so this affidavit, in support of a permit for accessory dwelling units, is something that communities, other communities are using, which also gets recorded at the registry of deeds, to put future owners of the property on notice that there is a restriction on that accessory dwelling unit. Because what we don't want to happen is that there's a house with an accessory dwelling unit, it's put on the market as a two-family, and the real estate agent doesn't necessarily know that it, the restrictions, the new buyer may not know about the restrictions, and they turn around and they buy it as an investment property, and we are now having this creep through the town of two-family properties that are investment properties, and we're not following our zoning in the RSA. So that's the, that's the purpose behind this affidavit. And I'm not shy about it, I copied it from this, from Keene, and, you know, it's a good idea that's being used throughout the state, and I feel that we should make it part of our program as well, so that we can ensure that, just as with the class 6 roads, that future owners of properties know what they're buying and what the restrictions are. Any questions on that form?
Good idea.
Thank you. Thank you. And then the last one is accessory dwelling unit recertification, and it's basically another step to ensure that the zoning is being followed out, that the people are actually still living on the property. And I believe it's town of Newmarket is where I got this form from, but this is being used in Newmarket and other towns where, on an annual basis, we don't necessarily need to do it annually, but it's that they, in order for them to continue with the accessory dwelling unit, that they're just certifying that, yes, they're still following the law. Planning board was very supportive of all of this. The only question they had is this last part, does it need to be annual? But the planning board was on board, so to speak.
And who maintains this? Is this something you allow? Who's going to maintain the paperwork?
Well, that would be something that my office would do. So that basically, I'd have a database of accessory dwelling units in town, and then, all right, it's November 1st, we're going to send out a letter to everybody with this form, ask them to fill it out and send it back.
And it'd become a permanent document in the property identification file in Town Hall as well.
Yes, and that they would also just provide some type of documentation that shows that they really are living there, copy of a driver's license, voter registration.
Seems sensible.
I think they're all good ideas, Tom.
Thank you.
I do have one comment.
Yes.
On this accessory dwelling unit recertification form.
Mm-hmm.
It lists your email address.
Well, it's my email address at the town.
I would recommend that that be something generic.
I actually am in favor of that.
If you ever got an offer or won the lottery, that you wouldn't have to maintain T Newcombe as a permanent address for this purpose, I would make it something like, you know, whatever the name of your office is.
Yeah, and actually, that's something that I thought of back when I started, because in some communities, you, there is a generic email address, that it might be code enforcement at...
Something like that.
But...
I don't really care what it is, just as long as it's not tied to you specifically.
Oh, no, I agree, and I think that's a really good point, and I would be in favor of doing that, not just for this, but across the board for all of my email.
Yeah.
So that...
So you're giving out an alias instead of your specific name?
It is nice to have my name on it, but I think it really should be the department. And so that that way, if there is any changes, or let's say, we get to a point where I'm taking on other responsibilities for code enforcement, and bring in an assistant, if we ever get to that point. But I think that, yeah, a generic email address would be good. If you, using Ashland as an example, they, every position there basically has an email address that's tied to the position and not to the name.
They're in the process of switching over to .gov, so I think when that switch is made, we can add the generic email address.
Yep. So, no, I'm very much in favor of that.
Unless you're working there for the next 150, 200 years.
I would like to get my 20 years in, but...
How long do we have?
19.
All right, good. Sounds perfect.
Eighteen and a half.
Sounds good. Anything else on ADUs? Anything else for...
No, I guess the only thing I'd say is, can I put these procedures...
Want a motion to make the, formalize this?
Sure, we'll make a motion that all the updated building permit application and fees that we discussed tonight will be approved.
Not the fees, the process.
The process.
ADU process.
Accessory dwelling.
We're going to go through public hearing on fees, but just the ADU process.
The ADU process be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Neil. Any opposed? Seeing none. Thanks, Tom.
Just a quick update, one last thing that I'm working on, that I've put on, and I've talked with Scott about it, talked with Kevin, talked with the planning board about it, but we've put it on hold pending, the settling of dust on some litigation, and that's regarding short-term rentals and rentals in general in town, in terms of inspections of them. But right now, Plymouth zoning prohibits short-term rentals, but there's been some litigation that's come up on it, and even though our zoning language doesn't fit that, I think we should put things on hold until we see where all of that settles out. But that is something that I would like to come back to this board about, probably sometime next year, once we see where things go.
Okay.
And then just lastly, while I'm here, if you've got any questions or comments or anything about anything else related to my position, if you, now's your time.
Anything from the board for Tom?
No.
We did have one question from the audience, Grace.
How long is short-term?
Short-term is defined, well, transient is the term that our zoning uses, and transient is generally defined as less than 30 days. So our zoning prohibits, well, transient housing in that, that our definition of a dwelling unit is that it is to be used for non-transient housing. So by definition, then, therefore, it's, it can't be rented out for less than 30 days.
So things like Airbnb or VRBO are prohibited in this community?
Exactly. They are prohibited, but we have not been enforcing that, and there are quite a...
Quite a few.
...in town. But as I say, before we start any type of enforcement action, I want to see what happens with this, with the litigation.
Yeah.
And also, I think it's a conversation that we want to have as a town to say, do we want to enforce the prohibition, or do we want to make an amendment to our zoning to allow it? So I think we want to look at all of that.
For sure. And I know that that's been a perennial conversation on planning board.
Yes.
So a question about that. Let's say Tenny Mountain makes a good go of it, and they have condos up there, would they be subject to this and not be able to rent them out as ski vacation spots?
If they, it depends on how they are, if they're considered a residential unit versus, say, a hotel. So they could build a bunch of condos and say, the purposes are not for residential, but the purposes are for, hey, short-term rentals. So that would be a hotel use.
Because hotel use is allowed.
Yeah. Well, I know that they were built many years ago, where, when the ski area was more in action, and that's how they were rented out, but since then, they've become more residential. So I don't know if there's a way they could go back to the way they were, or if, since they've been used as residential since then, if they are now residential.
Well, the current condos up there are considered residential, and therefore...
Subject to the...
Right, so they're subject to the current prohibition, although there's probably about 13 of them that, up there right now, that are on Airbnb. So, and Tenny, by the way, is looking great. Today, they had a crane hoisting in their new pumps into their rebuilt pump house. It's going to be exciting. They're going to be opening in a few weeks, and they've, Steve Kelly and the entire company has put a lot of money into the project and into the town.
It's exciting.
Yeah. It's a little off track, but...
We appreciate it. You're out there seeing this stuff.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, and even, I was up there today, inspecting when they had the pumps in, and talking with one of the guys that works there, and he, he kind of oversees the snowmaking and the lifts and the trails, and he's talking about how they've widened trails, and they've got long-range plans where they're going to be adding another pond for the snowmaking, and so they're increasing the acreage on their existing trails, and just, it's exciting to see it happen.
Thank you. We have high school civic students here, so I'll ask the question that's on their mind. When is the Domino's opening?
I honestly don't know. It's a slow process. They, I did insulation inspection about two weeks ago, and they started putting up wallboard and getting it closed in, so hopefully by New Year's, but we'll see.
There's coupons online for the end of December for the Plymouth Domino's, so...
Yep.
So hopefully, New Year-ish.
Yes, but it's, they're moving a lot faster on the exterior of the building.
The exterior is looking real good, that's why I wondered what it was looking like inside.
Yeah, it's still got a lot of work left, but I think, but what they're doing is by fixing up the outside, they're getting the excitement, they're getting the interest. It's all over Facebook, people, you know...
Everyone wants to know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they want to know what's going in, you know...
Yeah, Riverside Landing, Phase 2, that's the other big question.
So, all right.
All right, thanks, Tom.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate you. Okay. Signature file?
All right, so the first thing I have tonight for the board to sign, actually, Zach is the lucky one that gets chosen for this, this is the report acceptance for the audit, basically saying, Zach, that we have released everything that we needed to release to the auditor, the audit is complete with this approval, there are no findings, which is good.
It's very good.
Very good.
So I do, Scott and I have already reviewed it and signed it, so we will ask for your signature on that, so we can complete that project. So the next item that we have is forest fire warden...
Any questions or objections on the audit? Everybody look good?
Just confirming.
Okay. Forest fire warden appointment. This is to appoint Kevin Pierce as the candidate for this, and to remove Tom Morrison, who is retiring at the end of December. There's, looks like there's two places for the board to sign, if you can squeeze somebody else in there, that would be great.
I don't know about that guy.
Shifty.
The next one that I have here is, I have a report of wood cut with a timber tax. This is for a property that was, let me just find out where it was here.
He's in somewhere.
He's here somewhere.
Mary Ann won't have a problem.
It's got right over the top of the rest of us.
Anyways, the timber tax that we're showing here is $5,470. Good job, Terry.
It's a big cut.
Yeah, it was a big cut.
Where was that one, you said?
I couldn't find the location.
Okay, I won't put you on the spot.
Martin's property.
Route 3 South by the interval, up on the mountain.
Thank you.
Is that it?
That's all I have.
You can use my rubber stamp.
Oh, I have four, I'm good, thank you.
Good. All right, well, let's get into committee reports as that comes around. Mary Ann, Plymouth Village Water.
Unfortunately, last meeting conflicted with our meeting.
Planning board, Neil, did you attend remotely, or...
I attended the November 21st planning board last week. John Crisp was in the chair. We had eight items on our list. Mountain Village Charter School requested another continuation until January 16th, which we granted. Freelakes landscaping has a plan for expansion out on Tenny Mountain Highway, Hamilton Way, and he's hired an engineer, and he's going to have more information for us on November 15th. He needs drainage and wetlands delineation requirements. There was a motion to continue the site planning hearing to January 16th, and that was approved unanimously. The third one was a boundary line adjustment at Riverside Landing, which was accepted as complete unanimously. The engineer, David Sherborne, was the primary presenter. We went into a public hearing on the application for the lot line adjustment, and a motion to approve was passed unanimously. Then we went on to a site plan application for a 93-room hotel, very similar to the one that was presented on Smith Bridge Road. There was a motion to accept, and that was approved, and Phil Lamorrow was requesting an engineer construction review. We had a motion to approve the application for construction with conditions for town engineer input. The motion passed, and we approved the hotel project application. The, let's see, company known as SDG Plymouth came in to give us a presentation before they make an application. They had their engineer, TF Moran, with them. This is at 672 Tenny Mountain Highway, it's where the GMC garage used to be across from Walmart. It's a proposed mixed commercial use, several, at least two buildings, maybe one's going to have a drive-up. They're working on a stormwater plan and a traffic plan, but this project has already got a traffic light, because they're right across from Walmart. They'll be coming in with an application. And, let's see, we discussed zoning changes, we're going to have a public hearing next December 5th at our regular meeting, and we're going to discuss recent changes to state law. And then Joseph spoke about reformatting the site plan application, and it was adopted, the site plan application review form was adopted by the planning board. We had a discussion about New Hampshire Housing Champions Plan Program. There's a deadline in March, I believe that there's some funding grants possibly available. And then we talked about the HOP application, round two application, and we've been approved for a $25,000 grant on a housing master plan chapter. And that completes my notes. my notes.
Neil, where'd you say the the 93-room hotel's going in with the new plan?
Well, it's going to go in on the site where they're excavating currently. It's going to be located fairly fairly close to the existing hotel in in alignment with that hotel.
And this one's like an extended stay style or suite style?
Yeah, it's it's gonna I think it's really the intention is to provide housing for people who are temporary workers, like nurses, traveling nurses perhaps, and or, you know, anybody who who's maybe a commercial worker, who's doing a project, you know, could be, you know, people doing infrastructure work. So I mean, that's the intent of the project. You see that quite a lot in metropolitan areas where companies send their workers long distance and they really need a place to stay for the duration of the project.
Any other questions for Neil?
Neil, can you say who's who might be moving in in that property across from Walmart?
The name of the company is SDG Plymouth, and.
Okay, so we don't mention it? Okay.
Well, I yeah, I didn't catch the owner's name, but he was there. And he had his engineer, Alan, from TF Moran Engineers, and they're going to be submitting an application.
Sort of like those building plans on.
And the, you know, the site plan that they showed us looked very, very reasonable.
Right.
Would be nice to see that not just an empty lot.
Yeah.
Be great.
For a decade.
For a decade at least.
It's a pretty good site.
Yeah, it is. All right.
Used to belong to my grandmother.
Connected to everything in this town.
Yeah, really. Related to them all.
All right. Campus Community Council.
Not applicable.
No app. Right. School District?
PES, we reported on last meeting. The PRHS meeting was held on 11/19. The first privilege of the floor inspired some conversation about including a track with the lighting project. This was brought up by a participant of the audience and basically talked about adding it to the whole project. Basically, everybody took it under advisement. The first the the student report, some of the highlights are that they had a financial aid night. 65 students attended or student 65 people attended. I don't know that they were all students. That was followed up with an I-apply day, basically trying to get students to commit to the free application to colleges within the state of New Hampshire. Students also reported out on a blood drive. I didn't catch the details. And they did also report out on their voter registration day that they held for this last for eligible students who were over the age of 16 or 18, 18?
18.
And that it was attended by the area town, you know, the ones within the district town clerks. The principals report notable items that they had the honor roll and for the and the high honor roll come out. 16 students were inducted into the Spanish-French Honor Society. Did also report out that the musical Hades Town, I'm not familiar with it myself, will be out will be happening in February. On a more financial perspective, they were talking about AC1 and AC3 as part of the renovation. I'm assuming these are air conditioning units by the context. $18,000 in a design cost. And then, you know, obviously, they figure out the higher costs later. They also did report out on a trip to New York in March for the class of 2026. For the discussion items, they talked about the employee reference verification. Basically, this is a form, it's a policy. This was the first reading. So I guess it's a, you know, they had made a motion and they got approved. They did talk about the Title I Family and Community Engagement Policy. That was also approved. An advanced coursework enrollment policy. This is one that is a partnership with the community college system to allow students to get graduate credit while they're still in high school, and that was also approved. Not approved was an advertising policy that was basically being a first read. This was more about putting it out, and it's about offsetting some of the costs for events by selling advertising space, let's say, on the football field or whatever the case may be. And then the majority of the rest of the meeting was budget review, where they went through line by line item, not well, not line by line, but group by group.
Group.
The significant changes were more or less the high school budget is up by 1.9% as of that initial draft. That would constitute 343,804 dollar increase over present, and that would also be split out over the, you know, the towns that are included in the regional high school. And then finally, in the bridge of the floor, number two, was an individual asking for support to augment a trophy that was from 1991. He also advocated for two others that don't have any banners or trophies that were won as individual participants, but they were representing the high school to get some kind of recognition in their their hallway or trophy case. And that concludes the high school report.
Was there any mention about the Grand State Challenge?
I don't recall hearing about that one.
We have a final, actually, at the New Hampshire Public TV. They're they're back in the fray again for finals, and we were invited down for the match. So that's going to be like in in December. So looking forward to that.
Well, the next the next the next meeting, I think, is next week, so.
The night.
It's on.
Up there.
12/3.
3. Any other questions for Ted about the high school? All right. Conservation Commission?
Conservation Commission. Let's see, they did report out on the budget that they had two transactions for a total of $115. They also made made mention of a refund of $200 for an errant charge. And they also talked about the $9,000 that they need to submit a warrant article to get them put back into the conservation fund that I think we've talked about before. Their total balance of funds is $51,832.52. The Trails Committee reported up they got 13 volunteers to help working on the trails. I think that includes some of the the trails over in the Walter Newton area that are ski trails that are and some of them are really looking forward to using those this winter. They also talked about an initiative to get support for using high school students to do some of the trail work. I don't know. I don't remember exactly where that dollars is coming from. I think it was some kind of grant that they were talking about looking for. They were also talking about, you know, taking an inventory of trails. Not all of them are fully publicized, including on the website, so we did talk about that. Next was some topic about foul ink in the Oxbow Project Plymouth property. I didn't get a lot of detail on that one. Let's see, there was an issue brought up about East Stream on Tenny Mountain that was being diverted. And that possibly going to the snowmaking pond. And so that, you know, the PCC supported a desire to submit a surface water complaint form by the PCC to the state. Let's see, the NRI, we had two proposals. They talked about the two proposals, and I'm not going to go into the details because I don't know if one's been approved, but there was there wasn't a motion to approve one of them and to check for the availability of funds. Let's see, wildfire policy. There was a suggestion that we have a wildfire policy for conserve land. So that was, you know, identify what the risks were, coordinate with the with the conservation land. Communications, they're just talked a little bit about what to put on Facebook. And they did have a report out on what was going to Planning Board at the time. This was pre-planning board meeting. Something about Ridge View, parceling up for hotel, which we've already talked about. And then finally, they talked about an invasive's postcard. This is an initiative to get a little, you know, three by five that they can give to people that, you know, alert them to what the invasives are, what the risks are, and what they should do about it. And, you know, for information, basically reach out to the Conservation Commission. And that, I hope.
Does that be mailed out to people?
No, it would be it would be handed out.
Okay.
That was their intent.
You'd have to talk to them to get it.
Or or they would go to someplace if, let's say, they saw some invasives on a piece of property.
They might give it to the homeowner. Yeah.
Ted, Ted, did was there any discussion regarding meeting with the planning board regarding zoning changes?
Yes, they did mention that that they had desire to go to the planning board as well.
Thank you. Grace? Yeah, please. Sorry, Bill.
Grace was there, so if I missed anything, you can tell me.
Oh, no, you did. Great. But I I was one of the people that reviewed the natural resource inventory proposals from the two contractors. Was it awarded? I know that they had a preference for.
They had preference for one.
They haven't been rewarded awarded, and I did bring to their attention our procurement policy to assure that everything is being done in accordance with our procurement policy. Were there any concerns about that? I had a couple of concerns with that and brought those to their attention, as well as it would be a warrant article and a discussion with them on if the warrant article fails, that means the project fails. So I know they're talking about that a little bit more as well. Okay. Yeah, Bill.
So the Pike Hill Trail, there is a sign that is hanging down or is like planted just about when you kind of go up to the summit, and it says, closed because of regrowth area or something. It's been there for probably like 15, 20 years. And I don't think it's ever going to get open for like a, I mean, there's no, it's kind of like when, you know, the.
Is this on Pike's Peak there?
Yeah, it's right, right near Pike's Peak.
Yeah, yeah, I familiar with what you're talking about.
So it just seems like it might be time to remove that. And if there's a concern about like push, put brush down there or something because there's no trail there.
My guess is probably they had a problem with lots of people taking a shortcut.
Yeah, that was.
And this is this is discouragement from taking a shortcut, even though there is no trail there. People were treating it as a trail.
I think if you can bring it before the committee or whatever commission.
Yeah, we can bring it up.
Yeah, some people might realize, yeah, it's probably light dated.
Anything else for Conservation Commission?
Nope. That should cover it.
Capital Improvement, we met last week. It's last week, right? Last Wednesday. We reviewed the capital improvement plan for the next six years. There's no surprises in there. It's it's pretty standard. There is this year's about $200,000 less than the next few years. We think that that will also come down next year because there's a project on there related to the elevator in the building for 200,000, which will probably not be necessary. I don't know if that is still. The library elevator. The library, not the elevator in this building, the library elevator. So that'll probably be removed from the plan, at which point this year and next year will be pretty stable. And then we do have a little bit of a step up in the following year, but we'll continue to manage that and see if there's a project we can defer, if the tax bases come up, you know, we'll we'll see, but we're managing for it. The other.
We're not doing the elevator. We don't.
We don't think we'll need. It would be next year anyway, not this year, but we're pretty sure we won't need the elevator, which will will keep us low two years in a row. The one thing that wasn't on that plan was really any cost estimation around a public safety building. So we, as a committee, we did recommend, let's get let's get some sort of placeholder in there so that we can start talking about that as a community because that does if we're going to do that project, it's going to fall in that six-year plan window. So we wanted to get that in. Any other highlights you can think of from that meeting? Not big ones. I mean, the fencing at the cemetery was the only other addition to. Yep. The CIP. Yep. Right. We projected that fencing out over a few years because we had a total amount, but we hadn't actually projected it, so. And then just some terminology changes in regards to. Labels. That, but that's it. Yep. Pretty, pretty simple year, which is good. And that's going to the planning board for their approval. Or did go. Sue mentioned it, but I think it will go at the December, their next meeting. December meeting, yeah. Any questions about capital improvement? LRPC.
So Shannon Saunders is the the new ED, and she's, you know, very, very nice, very adequate. Definitely an improvement from the last one. And we had a nice conversation about the Tac project. The only applicant that is going to be approved is the one, you know, for Route Three North and both making viewscape better and also bike, you know, bike whatever path. So we didn't vote on it, but that's the only thing that's going to be going to go forward.
What's the rough timing on that?
The rough timing? So it's a 10-year plan, so it could be, you know, like engineering five years from now or, you know, quicker than Tenny Mountain Highway.
Yeah, we'll see. Yet to be determined, but.
And I don't believe we had a response yet. And we didn't have, we didn't discuss that at at LRPC. And I sat next to John Crist for the meeting. And the thing that's good about that is we now have like two votes on the on the committee. So, I mean, every little bit helps, I guess, but. And we have our next meeting is on the 11th, December 11th.
Anything else for Bill? Parks and Rec?
Last time they met during our meeting.
Yeah.
But I do have the the notes that Lisa provided. From Parks, they reported out that Horn Electric installed new power to the gazebo and into the posts, and that eliminates the need to use extension cords all over the place. Robert sat on a capstone project for the at the college for work on a project. They chose the Fox Pond walking trails and presented the project to Rob, mapped the trails and discussed creating a better map in the kiosk with Justin Legasi. And basically talked about signage and marking the trails. Northeast Mountain Bike Association, NEMBA, is building two pump tracks. There's no cost to the town for this project. They also reported out that Scott and Anne cut 5K from top part-time position and also reduced overtime by $2,000. Let's see.
Good work, you two.
Yeah.
Recreation, um. So they, they report out that this is the second season, uh, second session for clubs this school year, not only is there a cost savings for the department and families in clubs, but students have also been more invested doing, due, due to interest-based activities. They talked about the Veterans Day Ceremony that took place, they thanked all who attended, and especially Zach for hosting. The soccer pro, program had a major facelift this year, limiting non-residents, gave us the opportunity to offer a deeper experience, which included games against neighboring towns, got a lot of positive feedback. Trips, they continue to evolve, evolve here, we offered just, offered two trips back-to-back, twenty-four hour rental fee. So one, we partnered with, they, they partnered with Tapley Thompson Community Center, van trip to the Christmas Carol on the Conia is, is full with a waitlist. Basketball continues to be very popular, we offer programs similar to last year, in addition to grades one and two and three and four. Their partnership with Best Western, offering swim lessons and lifeguard training, this time has over two hundred and forty participants, that's pretty, pretty excellent.
Where's Best Western?
Camden.
Six completely, uh, six people recently completed the Red Cross Lifeguard Course through us. Their revenues have exceeded expectations with preference for residents. They reported out the ski and skate sale was last weekend. Pretty much. That's pretty much it.
Any other questions for Ted about Parks and Recreation? All right. Parking Committee and Economic Development.
Scott updated, so.
We already got it from that.
Proud to meet those folks.
Sounds good. Energy Commission?
Grace?
You want me to do it?
Yeah, please.
I mean, you're here, we might as well get it from the source.
And actually, Ashley Seba, who's the new chair, was here, and she needed to put her, her lovely daughter down for the night, and I think she zoomed back in, I don't know if we could bring her up.
I'm here, hello.
Hi, Ashley.
Hi, Ashley.
So for all, all y'all who don't know, Ashley, this is the new chair, just two things really quickly, I'm still gonna take the lead until the, um, the solar rig is up and running, and, and then after that, I'm gonna coordinate with Ann to apply for the thirty percent tax credit. I've been taking actually boot camp training through the local infrastructure hub, which is cool, I do it every two weeks, and they're getting us primed to do the application process, so, and I've been trying to update Ann as we go, and I think we'll be good with that application process, which is really simple, you pre-file, you let them know you're in service, you have to file a tax return, and Ann's looked at that tax return and said it's not too crazy, complicated, and then we get a check, apparently, that's like, doesn't that sound simple?
It sounds so simple.
Yeah. We, we will know by the end of the year about the additional ten percent back on the full cost of the solar array. So that's the solar part, and I don't know, Ashley, do you wanna update the, the board on any other energy projects, conversations?
Yeah, hi, everybody, I wish I could see all of your faces. So, right now, the Energy Commission is working on two important projects, one is we're investigating community power in New Hampshire, which promises to reduce the energy supply rate, we're still vetting a lot of their materials, we will also be inviting the New Hampshire Electric Co-op in to hear what they have to say about it, and if the rates are lower, and if we believe in their model, which is a bit different than other models in the state, then we'll make a recommendation, but there's still a lot of investigating to do, so we're really at the beginning stages of that. The other thing that we're doing right now is we are working with Scott and Jesse to think about some building audits and really try to get a sense of what data do we have and can we create around the energy usage in our town buildings. So we proposed using a online tool to help gather some of this data, it sounds like they may or may not use it, but the lines of communication are open, and we're really happy to be working with the town that way. Those are the two big ones right now, Ann Saler, I guess, is on this, the library, we're looking at the solar array that's there right now, and looking at ways that we could improve the output, because it isn't actually putting out as much energy as we, we thought that it would, so we're investigating that as well. Any questions?
Nope.
Thanks for, thanks for letting us do it that way.
Absolutely, thank you both.
Appreciate it.
Advisory Budget Committee also met last, was it last week, two weeks ago?
Two weeks ago now.
Yeah, it was two weeks ago. And we, we sort of finalized the Budget Committee work, you all have that first draft effort, huge, huge gratitude to Scott and Ann, Budget Committee, Department Directors. The budget we're gonna get as a board this year is so much further along, I think, than it's been in, I mean, it's the fifth year I've had to do it, and you all did a great job getting it this far, so I think, you know, we have our first working session next week, but I think we're in a much better place than we've ever been. That's it, so, study this and be ready for Monday.
Looking forward.
P S U negotiations, those don't start until spring. Spring, Chamber of Commerce.
I'm gonna pull the bill, I have my notes at work.
Well, get them next time.
Appreciate it, I really did.
Get them next time. Uh, Perlak?
Um, I left, I forgot my notes, but, so, uh.
I have them right here.
We have a meeting, a meeting next week, and also, what was it?
What day?
Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Yep.
Is that it? Happens Tuesday?
Pretty much, oh, my, my tenure is up, and I can reapply.
You're reapplying, or you.
Someone's like burning, burning a desire to be on the Pemba Juwasa, the local advisory committee. Well, we'll think about it.
I think Mary Ann just volunteered.
We'll think about it.
I really would.
You're right on the edge.
Full stop.
Volunteers from the audience.
That's it.
Police and Fire Building Assessment Committee? Do we have, do you have any news?
At this point, not a lot has changed, I know we're exploring a couple of properties right now, we're having some communication issues, we're waiting on some feedback from one of the property owners, and then we have been actively working with the Turner Group on the design of the public safety building, they've come back, we sent some changes that we prefer to see, they sent those back, so that's kinda where we're at now, Scott, do you think of anything?
No, I think you were waiting for those changes to come back to schedule a meeting with the committee.
Yep, so, they're, they're on par, they've been reactive, good to work with so far, it's just it's taken longer.
Any anticipated timeline on when you think that will happen?
Uh, soon, I think, uh, I imagine probably once we get over the Thanksgiving rush, and we should be able to.
Probably something in December, you think?
Yeah, oh yeah, for sure, yeah, early December.
Okay. Sounds good, we got the update on union negotiations, anything else?
No, we're meeting with the Police Department tomorrow morning.
We're talking on public a little bit more about that.
All right, that sounds fantastic. Anything else from the board?
I, I'd just like to say that everything I heard tonight was. Encouraging.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a great point, thanks Neil, anything from the public?
Thanks for the hard work you do, select board.
Thanks, Grace. Civic students, thank you for attending, anybody need a form signed?
You should do that now.
Now is the time, because we're gonna go into non-public, and you don't wanna hang around for that.
Any one of us could take.
Yeah.
I'll take one. I'll take.
I am.
Sneak right in there.
Oh, hi Haley, I will see you at one thirty.
Okay.
All right, great, right downstairs, just come in the front door and we'll come back.
You said last page.
I interned prosecutor slaughter in the Canton courthouse.
Oh, okay.
That's kinda like the basis of the.
Very good, very good.
Welcome.
I'll see you tomorrow.
There you go.
You're welcome.
Okay.
All righty.
Motion to go into non-public in accordance to, with RSA ninety-one dash A colon three comma two, a personnel E lawsuits.
A second.
Ted, your vote?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Zach? Aye. Mary Ann?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.